Good afternoon. I now call to order the Tuesday, July 8, 2025, 3:00 p.m. School Board Workshop. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will now move on to roll call, starting at the end of the table.
Lauren Ramirez, present.
Janie Ruddy, present.
Derek Barnes.
Kristi Chum.
Will Furry.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, are there any additions or changes to today's agenda?
I do have one request, is that we move seventeen point zero one, the school resource deputy's contract after board, I'm sorry, after public comment before seven point zero one.
Okay. All right, that has been noted. Like a motion to move forward with this agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Barnes and the second by Mister Ruddy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we will move forward with today's agenda, and we will now open up for public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay, so we will close public comment and move on to our first agenda, item seventeen point zero one, school resource deputy contract.
Lee, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, again, Chair Furry, school board members, and Superintendent Moore. I am joined today by Chief Strobridge from the Flagler County Sheriff's Office and Sven Smith, our general counsel. We come to you this afternoon to continue to seek our partnership with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office in providing student resource deputy coverage along with school crossing guard coverage throughout our schools in the district. You will notice two significant changes to this year's agreement compared to last year's agreement. The first one, if I can draw your attention to page ten, Article seventeen, and that deals specifically with access control. Since we are moving to electronic access throughout our district-owned properties, in speaking with the sheriff's office, we're trying to expedite response time in the event of emergencies. So this language references providing the sheriff's office beyond our school resource deputies electronic access to our campuses that they can use in the event of emergency. So rather than initiate a separate MOU, we thought would be best to add it to our current agreement. So that's one significant change that you have not seen. The other change for your consideration, which is new this agreement compared to other agreements, is the recommendation of a floater deputy. So as you are aware, beyond our contract with our standard contract costs with the with resource deputies, we pay additional costs for overtime coverage for our extracurricular events, and then there's also an additional fee in the event an SRD is absent or for training or personal leave or other matters. So in previous years, our contract read that the district would be responsible for picking up those costs if we had further required coverage as well as the extracurricular coverage. In speaking with Chief Strobridge, we were discussing what are ways we can maybe alleviate some of those costs. We've had discussions, it seems like each year for the past number of years, about a floater deputy. We did agree that if we do implement a floater deputy, that would alleviate the district from all required school coverage periods, meaning the SRD leave times and things like that. And then also, in terms of helping stabilize some of our extracurricular events coverage, in the event that the floater deputy did not fulfill his forty-hour work week by covering schools, that extra time would be credited towards extracurricular event coverage. And that language is stated specifically on page eight, Article eight.
So why do we go down this avenue where we're essentially almost skirting the line of having the entire payroll of these officers under the coverage of the school district as opposed to a contract agreement, much like, let's say, our legal counsel, where we pay a flat rate fee per hour? And because it seems like we're absorbing financial costs for their sick leave, vacation leave. In addition, we have to absorb COLA increases that are agreed to with the sheriff's office as opposed to the budget that were provided, for example, under Safe Schools. I'm sure there's a wide discrepancy between that. So have, has this been the format for this agreement with sheriff's office through the history of our work with the SRDs, or has it been more of a contract, hourly contract agreement in the past?
It's always been a service provider type of contract. At least I could only speak for the last nine years. I can't speak prior to that. Twenty seventeen was the first time I was involved. Now, what I do know from the history, from Miss Gavin, when I first came into the school board back in twenty seventeen was, the contract had remained the same for a long period of time, members of years prior to that, that basically, we provide this particular service for this amount of cost. As a result of that, the county, other entities pick up the additional cost. It basically breaks down like this, is we provide you thirteen deputies for X number of dollars. The other part of the cost has been borne up to this point by the Board of County Mission, as well as one from Coast. So when you say you carry the cost, the school board has the ability, hundred percent, has the ability to have their own school law enforcement personnel. And you certainly can do that. That's been discussed in the past, just like we, we actually hired your crossing guards. You pay a hundred percent for crossing guards. We've also suggested that the school board be trying to, because what happens is when the school crossing guard's not available, we always make sure our positions fill, a lot of times with a deputy sheriff and such. So we're providing the service overall, just like any of your other service providers. And as far as I know, at least in the past probably fifteen, twenty years, this is exactly how the contract should be.
Now, it seemed like in the last two years, though, there was a large, much larger sums of money going to overtime. I believe it was sixty or seventy thousand dollars than in years preceding those two years. So the contract has been relatively stable. Why in the last two or three years did we see a seventy thousand dollar per year increase in overtime?
The largest reason is because of this. Again, we proposed a floater every time. And in prior contract agreements, it was loaded into the contract that if you're not going to provide a floater, then anytime the school has a vacancy that is a result of the deputy being sick, infirmed, not standard usual training, because we do that in the summertime, then the school board would begin to cost. And we were having a floater deputy. If, if it was because of an operational need that we brought them out of school, then we'd not fill with our deputies and the deputy makes the cost. This is why that looking at the floater kind of made sense, is that all that cost then is borne by the sheriff's office. So with the floater deputy, you don't have any additional responsibilities for overtime for filling the school when a deputy's injured or out, not there to be available. The additional benefit would be, or stand a little bit, that Mr. Buss that was talking about is that, you know, certainly we know that during the fall, we're going to have a lot of Friday nights out there, which means a lot of additional coverages. And what the floater would do is essentially, the planned schedule for the floater would be that he would work in the evenings on Fridays, help cover some extracurricular activities that you're now paying for directly. So it would kind of look like this. Monday through Thursday, the deputy would work and fill in wherever he needs. And if he didn't have to fill in somewhere on that Friday, his automatic schedule would be to fill one of those other slots that you're paying additional dollars for today, to cover the schools for extracurricular activities. That's why when you look at the scope of it, it makes it more attractive. Doing the dollars and cents, I'm not sure that we are quite there in the amount of overtime that we expend, but that's kind of the overview on what the costs are across the board. So...
Would you say, though, that we absorb the cost of sick or infirm?
Yeah.
Are you saying of an additional headcount, or are we paying their sick day as well as another headcount for that coverage?
No, you're not paying both. You're just paying for the one. So if the SRD at Old Kings Elementary School is out for that day, and we use a filling deputy that we have to use on overtime, you're paying that today.
So Chief, is, is that, is the floater going to be a one-for-one then? So hypothetically, if you get two SROs that were out, are you only going to pick up, you want to cover the other one as well?
Cover the other one as well.
So that extra cost, and there's times where you would have two or three that potentially could be out for whatever reason, it would not be one-for-one. I'm going to cover whoever is out regardless.
Whoever's out regardless of what happens, absolutely.
What is difficult for me to evaluate these two plans and the two appendices is that both, neither of them include a comparison of what we're paying in overtime now. For example, the one with the floater is more expensive, of course. We have another headcount. But, okay, what would we be paying if we were to just have those extra events covered? Are they always covered in overtime? Or can we create another part-time contract and increase fees for those events that need to have more SRD covers?
Really, in this contract, that's kind of covered because there's a fee based for those extracurricular activities already in the contract. That became a flat fee. We kind of negotiated that because it was actually at one point actual cost.
I think it was last year.
Last year, yeah. Because what had previously happened, it's based on the deputy it works on. And Coop, if he's working, he's very expensive, because he's been here a thousand years, and he's quite expensive. So what we did to make it more stable, for better planning purposes, for better tracking purposes, we made it a flat fee as a consequence of that. That's actually in this contract as well.
Do you have the ability to choose the range of years of services that an officer has to fit within our budget, or are we receiving who they assign individuals?
We, we don't, but to Chief's point, with that flat rate, it doesn't matter who they send. It's going to be the same cost. In years past, and one other thing you mentioned that I just want to touch on, that's why it's hard to, when you look at overtime costs year over year, it's kind of, it does fluctuate, because the formula in years past, it depended on which deputies they were sending, and then either last year or the year before, they switched to that flat rate, which now we get a better understanding of. Now we can really look at how many overtime hours did we, or did the dollar...
And another point outside of the overtime piece is we use, utilize, I'm going to say we utilize services throughout the summer, and all those people are being, they're actually working right now for summer school and things of those that nature as well. Is that correct?
There are some of those, and some of that's contractual as well. The, I want to go back up and grab a quick point that she was making about the cost as far as tenure within the organization, is when we put this whole formula together initially, there's about five of those positions that are still at entry level, and you don't get entry-level deputies. You get deputies that are experienced, because we're not a first-year deputy sheriff in the school as an SRD. And we did that to help kind of stabilize the cost as we go forward to the future. So we haven't really changed that. What was previously locked in was some of the people who were serving SRDs for a number of years within this program, who already had higher power, so they're kind of locked in. But insofar as, if we change out people, you can get some, it's twenty years, and you're still paying that lower amount for them.
Mr. Buss, I'm concerned, though, that for one hundred fifty-four thousand, we're getting, we're essentially saying, that is going to fill these empty spots as well as Friday evening fall. That doesn't seem like a full-time role. Do you have other plans to fully utilize that individual to their maximum utilization for that headcount?
So I think a couple of things with that. I do not anticipate that floater deputy being able to cover all of our extra over time, just because a Friday night football game has six to however many deputies. The Kansas FBC has a large number of deputies present. So I don't anticipate it alleviating all those costs. One thing we are looking at, and we need to do is come up with a staffing matrix as far as what does it look like at extracurricular events? How are we justifying when we need a deputy, how many deputies, and making it consistent so we can plan and budget effectively for what is, what is the cost of running some of these events? And I think you mentioned it earlier, do we need to look at, you know, how much are we charging our spectators to come into some of these events? Because they are fundraisers for our extracurricular clubs and sporting teams. So that's kind of where we're at moving forward, is just coming up with a standardized process. And, you know, when we're having these events, let's plan ahead and not making spur-of-the-moment decisions, hey, we need six deputies because we're expecting a large crowd tonight. So making it more consistent.
What's the salary increase on this compared to last year's? Like, what's the percent increase on this new contract request?
I don't have it off the top of my head. Here's what I can tell you is, special risk FRS went up considerably. You know, I know that our overall budget request increased more than a million dollars just to cover the state or county system for special risk class increases alone. I think it's like two point three percent, or it was two percent of what it was.
So at least five and a half percent?
It's not about five and a half percent, but I had to run the numbers to say exactly what it was.
So Mr. Buss, when our Safe Schools increase has been a little over a percent, where's the extra funding going to come from this?
It will come from the general funds. Our Safe School allocation remains relatively, almost exactly the same this year as it did last year.
Has there been discussions on subsequent contracts, or is that even allowed to kind of say, you know, we can only spend what we're given by the state? If the state says you get a one percent increase, a seven percent increase, whatever it is for Safe Schools, that that's what we proportionally can increase with salary increases for deputies or whatever it might be? Is there something we can do in the future to tie that together?
I would, I would think on this, on that particular question, that we probably need to, again, Safe School, we have a lot of requirements that we want to have our students to be safe, and we all want that. But then making sure that we are lobbying, that we don't have stagnant for Safe School money. And that's going to take the help of our sheriff and the Sheriff's Association and people like that to lobby to say that this particular issue is important. And I would ask that we, and partner with the sheriff's office, that we make that a priority moving forward and working together with that, because it is not, to me, it's not acceptable that we place so much emphasis on school safety that we do not increase the numbers for school safety through our legislative process.
And I would love to give you a brief, such as, I may give you a brief history on how that works for Safe Schools. You know, the Safe School formula is based upon, which applying to the Act of the Communities, so these counties have had high prices, get the vast majority of the money from the state. It was, it has not changed the formula in a number of years. In twenty seventeen, the sheriff, the deputy, said, gee, let's go to Tallahassee together, and let's try to get this changed because it's disparate. So if you live in a safe community, you don't get as much money. And that's not, that's not right. When the state needs a mandate, SRD in every school, that's when it became more and more important that we actually change every year.
I don't think we have to be on pace, and I think we, we're going to get what we do. We are in the gap, but we have, we have, we have been doing, we're not going to, we're not going to, so that we, I think, we're, 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 we're not going to, 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 we're not going
Because there is a difference in a road deputy filling in at a school compared to a, you know, an SRD filling in at a school. To Ms. Moore's point, it does benefit us in terms of being able to plan for some of those expenses. Ms. Ruddy, to your point and Mr. Furry's point, there are unknowns. We know it'll alleviate the required school coverage over time. As far as extracurricular overtime, we've identified as a district that there is no state statute that says at extracurricular events you have to have X amount of SRDs. But there is language that says it is our responsibility to provide policy what that looks like. So we need to identify, you know, when are we going to have SRDs? At what point do we need multiple SRDs? Ms. Moore has recognized that we need to establish that going into this school year. And we've spoken with representatives from sheriff's office. We're going to sit down and get their recommendations on what does some of this stuff look like. That way, we're not making spur of the moment decisions. So the extracurricular overtime is one of the unknown factor that we don't have a true number on. I do want to state, though, if whether we go with the floater deputy or not, I personally don't feel it's adding extra safety to our campuses. I feel our current model, we are safe in and we provided a safe environment for however many years we've been doing this model. That wasn't the intent to bring the floater deputies to make our schools safer. The intent is to bring this on a trial basis to see if it will help alleviate some of those costs and see if it will be beneficial, you know, in terms of planning, building those steady relationships on campuses. And maybe it will be, you know, cost beneficial as well. So that was the intent behind it, not we feel we need to make our schools safer or...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry if I missed this, but is the floater going to be full time during the day? There'll be an extracurricular... It's not if somebody's sick, then they fill in.
No, it's full time.
They're there.
And they could also, just to go back, so if the middle school deputy has to be off campus to make an arrest, that person would be, if he's working, he would respond to go and fill in that spot there. Is that correct?
Or he could be standing in her corner too as well. So it's for all of those things, yes.
So he literally, or he or she will just be go to like, alright, Deputy Smith, we need you at Matanzas. Deputy Smith, we need you at Old Kings. And that's like the intention to kind of alleviate...
We are sure in speaking with Mr. Barzad that we can fill the schedule?
Yeah, well, yeah, I think from what I was looking at, I feel there would be, it could be an 80-hour week, work week, but I mean, just from the activities.
In addition to that, too, you know, they are trained in many other things. There's evaluations that should be continually done and such. Again, there's so many state mandated things we have to do now in our schools and everywhere else that there's time to fulfill those kind of positions. Also, maybe a DARA officer.
Well, just as we decide whether we would want to go with a floater or not, because there's definitely pros and cons to both, right? And, you know, but if we're saying, hey, you know, we'd like to have a floater, but you know, how do we kind of justify this financially as well? You know, we look at this, the overtime seems to be always the unknown here. If we're talking about like at a sporting event, you know, where it's a large event, like you mentioned in that example, where we have to have maybe six deputies there. Well, not knowing exactly what our hourly rate is off the top of my head right this second, but do we have three deputies and maybe three private security or something like that? Or have some other form of security, whether it was like a guardian or whatever version of that that it might be to make this happen? Because we want to, we definitely want to solve a problem here, but at the end of the day, this unknown could just magnify the cost here over time. And so if we were to do it, I would say that if we went down the road of having a floater, we could look at some of these cost-saving supplements to it, but at the same time, it should be looked at more of a pilot program rather than a full adoption of this idea. If we said, okay, let's try this for 12 months and write it very clearly in the contract so that there's not expectations on the sheriff that this person is going to automatically remain on the payroll. After 12 months, we could evaluate the true cost and service benefit, right? It's not always just the money, and see if this floater really works. So if we were to go down that road, that would be something that I would like to see written into the contract, because if we don't, then it becomes harder to undo these things if the expectations are, hey, this is the direction we're going for the future.
Is this the first time that we've done a floater, you said?
That's the first time it's ever come to the board.
Okay.
We have talked about it every year since 2017.
And in one thing, so with the floater, so we know it's a full-time role, they are an employee of the sheriff, so basically they're, or they're covered under the sheriff. So let's just say they were injured or they accidentally, just like any other SRD, then everything insurance related would be under the sheriff's department as well, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Just another question related to this, from a security and safety and, you know, a criminal aspect too as well, and the usage of canines that we already have in the school. And we have one that's dedicated to Palm Coast High School. And to me, that utilization potentially could be used at another, you know, spread around to the other schools instead of just that one school all the time. So potentially maybe your floater, and I can't tell you how to run your operation by any means, but it seems that particular, if we were to go this route, that is a way to utilize that asset in the other locations more frequently potentially as well.
Absolutely.
Well, I know with the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but with the canine, there's a lot of training that the canine has to go to. So that actually, when they, that canine has to go away with his deputy champion to go train in special conferences, then we have that opening at FBC that now we need an officer for overtime. But if there's a floater, then the floater would take that. So that's like another example of getting brought to the board.
So that's what we're alleviating is bringing in another officer that would be charted, we'd be paying overtime. Otherwise, we would just be paying the rate that, for the floater, and it wouldn't be considered an overtime cost.
Right.
Right? It'd just be just filling in the spot. And that's one of those unknown budgetary items that we can't reflect, because we don't know how people's lives are going to be, if they have to be out of work and when that cost is going to be more...
But what we do know is that if they're a minimum 5% cost every year, right, at this $1.5 million, we're, if we take this floater, right, we're essentially saying every single year, we're another $100,000, $120,000 if the math is off my head right. The other piece is, yes, there's an economic law called Parkinson's Law. The time you apply to something, it will take the time to do that work. We could apply tons of work to anybody, but can we afford it? There are a lot of advantages. I'm not saying I wouldn't love to have 10 floaters, but I don't know, there are a lot of unknowns in terms of can we afford this long-term if the current budgetary pressures are longer term and God forbid our property taxes come in even less than they are in the future, right? And so to think if we, every headcount we take on with a 5% increase, which is low for their COLA, we're going to every year absorb essentially be paying out another headcount for that based upon the $1.5 million. Do we have that in our budget?
And I would just, if we could make this, I don't want to continue to lead an old dead horse to death, but is there a way, and we talked a little bit about the matrix earlier, you and I did too as well, and you brought it up. Is there a way for us to, as an action item from here, for you all to take a look at the matrix of what that has looked like in the past? And then what realistically that looks like for this coming school year of what we think that should be? And is there some savings in that as well compared to what's been done in the past? Because I don't know, you know, before, I don't have it, I'm just throwing these numbers out. Did you have 15 or 20 there before, but we really only needed five? And so, or you had five, but you really needed 10? And so really look at the numbers. And we had an incident here and kind of looking at, we had some serious issues at this particular location, and we actually had to call in resources. That's going to take a little bit of homework, I realize, but I really want to know is, did we have enough resources there when we didn't? And I can see, I know that we've had some issues and stuff like that in the past, and could some of this been alleviated if we'd have had more personnel at some of these particular spots?
The only way to truly justify this financially is the offset of overtime right now. That seems like the only bucket of money that we have to try and tap into is not spend that, because there's no money from safe schools and our budget's not going to be bigger.
Or raise the ticketing at events or start to ticket certain events that are not taken yet.
Like $1 extra, I mean, I was going to wait for board request, but having that could be, I don't know.
Well, what we've got to remember too is that right now, we're having a great workshop discussion, and that's what we're doing here right now, is we're building the understanding and information to help us get to this. When is this action?
So this will come back before you for July 22nd?
Okay, so we'll be on that, okay.
At that time, I did write down that you would like for the two agencies to go back and for the pilot to just have it clearly written, that is a pilot, it's just a one-year thing, make sure that is clearly written if that is the route that you go. When you receive this on the 22nd, unless it is pulled, because you're not prepared to make that decision or any of that, you would be voting, you'll have both before you and you will identify which direction you will be going in.
I think the other item was an understanding of the offset of the overtime costs, which is to help us better understand the cost savings as well as the true additional cost to the floater.
Do you understand what, do you understand what is being asked with that request?
So in terms of the additional costs, we're just talking about extracurricular activities, correct?
No, like there was actual overtime, right?
Correct, $78,000.
Okay. So if we take the, what was it, 156, 78?
Okay, mind you, okay.
122 or something? So that's the true exact cost to this position? And then do you have a projection on how much this would cover extracurricular activities?
That's going to be, that number's going to be hard to calculate.
Because this year was, we did $55,000, right, for the overtime, for the extracurricular activities, was it $55,000? $57,000? And so we can't gauge what of the $57,000 the floater will or will not take.
Because it could depend upon whether who's out that particular day, would he would have already taken it?
Or that we, yes.
And we can guesstimate potential.
Ms. Ruddy, to your point, we know there's approximately $57,000 worth of extracurricular overtime that would need to be paid somehow.
But it's like one person, so it's like, all right, are there, do we estimate they can take on 15% of that?
Yeah, I think, I think we can look and it'd be hard to estimate. It, that number's going to be dependent upon how many vacancies are at school required.
Because otherwise, what we're looking at is paying double the amount that we paid for overtime last year to save half the amount on overtime this year.
I think, again, that's why it's brought to us on a trial basis. Mr. Furry, to your point, on page one, it does say this is a one-year trial basis in the warehouse statement. And just to help stabilize costs is how we were, with both the understanding, if this isn't beneficial for each client, then we wouldn't bring it up for consideration.
And I really think if we're looking to determine if this, this is one of those things that you, we have to do it to find out, which is terrible situation, but it doesn't appear that there's real hard data for comparison to say exactly how the time is going to be. And we can put some expectations on it, but you know, I think at the end of the day, we have to decide, do we think it's valuable to have this floater for reasons other than just offsetting the overtime? Because it's clear, it's not likely going to completely be covered by that. So what are the value of having that there? The added values of having that floater for the safety of our school? And is, do we feel that now's the time to allocate that, those resources? I think that's really what this comes down to, because we can always say having more presence on our campuses is better. But again, then also we have to look at, but we still have adequate coverage if we don't. That's the thing, we're not lowering...
Yeah, and this isn't even adding more presence, really, it's just filling in the absentee...
Exactly, keeping that, the flow of an actual SRD that's engaged with our campuses, and so it's a familiar face. There's a lot of value in all these things. But again, is, can we allocate the resources to achieve this now? Or is it, is this better served at a later date? As Chief had said, that this has been brought up within discussion, not necessarily with the board before, so it's been something that has been workedshopped with district staff. So, you know, again, is now the time, right? So it's the first time we're seeing it, but is now the time for us to do that? But that's all for us to decide ultimately when we meet on the 27th, so.
Maybe if you're going back and pulling data, you can look at maybe the last couple of years of how much, you know, vacation time and stuff like that we had throughout and say, okay, well, we can fill in that part and then say, okay, he's at least going to have to be there, I'm just going to throw a number, he's there 50 days, he's had to fill in for somewhere else. And then of those hours that are left, throw those into an overtime bucket that we had, whatever hours reached that $57,000, to see if, okay, he would have filled in the rest of the remainder of time in those spots. I mean, that's not going to be a science by any means, but it would...
Deduct the same amount from him.
Right. Anyway, it would count.
Exactly, get an estimate.
Give us a ballpark figure of what we're trying to look at.
Because I think if we take the actual hours.
Yep.
And then use the current multiplier, like the new rates will be and all that type of stuff, we'll give a little clearer picture.
Yep.
And not that this would make a huge difference, but I brought it up before, but, and I spoke, I know, with Ms. Patty before, how much it costs us to have an SRD or, you know, here at our workshops, we can, you know, run the numbers and, you know, like as, like just not the board meetings, but the workshops, because I know in the past, we used to not have that. So that, it won't offset it a lot, but that could potentially help with cost if, because otherwise, that floater would be filling in a space here. So, you know, I'm just...
Yeah, and again, everything's, you know, this is not, this is something that is, we're comparing only with right now, you know, as this district grows, we're going to need more SRDs to begin with, so that, you know, this is one that could graduate into that role. And, you know, all I'm saying is that there's a constant movement in security for our schools and our district. And so, but, but to Mr. Barr's request about, you know, having some sort of calculations at least gives us some measure of expectation that we can balance against as we're following this and say, hey, it's nowhere near what we estimated, or hey, it's getting better. Just something to measure off of, you know, so.
It could go either way, to be honest with you. It really could show some other points, you know, maybe, and I'm just looking for a cost benefit too, at the safety aspect, I mean, of this board members, of the board members here, I mean, being an SRO, I get it. I mean, I think that, I know, I see the value, I know the value in what they bring to the table, and, but we're also at a, at a time where we have to look at what's good from a dollar to a cent, just like the sheriff's office and everybody else has to do too. And again, I can't thank the sheriff's office enough and our partners that we have with the county and the city for what they do to support Flagler Schools. And it's extremely, extremely important that we all recognize the value that our other partners put into the safety of our students, and I really appreciate that.
Absolutely. And they go beyond their job, because they connect with students, having fun with them at dances, you know, shoulder to talk to. We really appreciate it, it's been immensely valuable.
That's certainly what Sheriff Staley wants for the SRDs, is to be engaged and involved in those kind of processes. He's always supported the idea too, that in the future, that we certainly could do programs that are similar to a DARA or a GREAT program or something like that. I think that's important.
And I'll tell you, at the Belt Air promotion, I don't know if it was VPK or kindergarten, you know how many little ones, they said, when I grow up, I want to be Deputy Cooper.
Yes, yes.
You know, and so that's a huge difference when you have a deputy that's there with that child, whether they're VPK or high school, and that's a different level. So like what you guys do for us, like having a SRD with our students, it's, I mean, it's priceless. Like I'm like, think of that, like multiple kids said that, Deputy Cooper, so you have Deputy Cooper. It's so cute. Thank you.
So, Board, are we, do we have enough information for today's discussion?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
All right. So we will get back to our regular order here. Okay, so we are at finance consent.
Good afternoon, Chairman Furry, Board Members and Superintendent Moore. I am here to answer any questions on finance consent.
Okay, we are on 7.01, board approval of purchases over, orders over 10,000.
Can I have the...
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I want to talk about the purchase orders for the vehicles. And so if we can just kind of walk through the process of these vehicles and what they're replacing, is there a one-to-one replacement for the vehicles that we're purchasing? And do we have a procedure that is in place of where we're rotating vehicles out? And what does that look like and where do we stand?
Sure, I'll go ahead and start, I'm going to have Mr. San Philip, Philip will come up. Just, just to brief you on the process, we do have a rolling five-year white vehicle, white fleet replacement plan. It was started by Dave Freeman years ago, and the reason was because we got to a point where we had so many aging vehicles, it was costing so much more money to maintain and repair them instead of replacing them when they should. So David works with Fleet on that, and we've been using it for years. We are getting to the point where we're not having to over-replace and spend excessive money each year because of how many years we've been doing that. I will say that there is a line item on the five-year capital plan every year for white fleet, as there is buses. Last year, we spent about $1 million. This year, it was lower by $200,000, it was about $800,000, just shy of that.
And that would include this number, or if that's...
Yes, that's, that's for all the vehicles we plan to replace for 2026. I will tell you too, and Marcus will touch on this more, but all of these are replacement vehicles. I think the oldest one dates back to 2005. Do you want to add?
2004.
2004?
Yeah. And the, specifically, when you look at like the F-450, it was a multi-year plan for the F-450s. We had a dump truck that was aging, and instead of replacing a dump truck that is just used for dump for one purpose, going to the F-450s, now you have a multi-use vehicle that they could use every day for towing, for traveling, and then also for the dump.
And I will also mention typically these purchases are done throughout the year, you don't see them all at one time. However, we were informed of a price increase as of July 1st, so since we were able to get them to POs prior to June 30, we are locked in to that price.
And then can we talk a little bit about what we're utilizing some of these particular vehicles for potentially for some cost savings as we replace, I don't know, 2004 vehicles, as we're replacing some of the cars as well, correct? And so I guess what I'd like to see, if I could, do we have the vehicles that we're replacing, the year and the mileage? And if I, I will get that afterwards.
Yes, maintenance costs, I can get that for you, yeah.
Okay.
And the use is staff use for, of course, day-to-day things in order to decrease reimbursement. We also staff travel outside of the county to reduce our rental costs through enterprise is what we typically use, as well as for like our students. So and so for some of our smaller teams that are activities as well, to be able to use that to transport students to different events as well.
Have we done an analysis recently to determine, you know, if, how much cost savings this is instead of paying mileage or enterprise rental cars? And to determine if, what is the quantity of the fleet vehicle that we should have on hand? Like how many are being checked out on a daily basis, that kind of thing?
I don't know that we have that analysis. We definitely don't have it right here, but we can definitely go back and look at our requests for the vehicles. I will tell you, the vehicles that are even just here at the district office, they are definitely always being used, and people are still having to use their personal vehicles often to travel along the county. What Mr. Walker has also done with Mr. Mysario over in fleet and transportation is making, and Mr. Freeman, developing a more comprehensive fleet request process to ensure that vehicles are not just, I think outside of the vehicle that I use on a regular basis, everybody else's vehicle is really up for grabs. And so making sure that we have a process that these vehicles can be in use and not just sitting in a parking lot, for sure.
Is there like a, this is probably a whole nother set of questions for another segment of this workshop, but is there a computerized way of checking out these vehicles? Is that correct?
That's what we're working on.
Working towards?
Yes, I'm working towards a process.
Where you just go to a box, open up a key, and then you go wherever you want to?
Yes. And we did, we have started some of that work, but that is the intent for this year is to make it a system that is very much like digitally led. Right now, it does have Ms. Clarice from, and my department is in the loop of that as well as in our fleet that is doing a lot of that, making sure that the vehicles can be used across the, across the county.
On the heavier duty equipment that we have, like an F-450 that gets multi-uses, I mean, are these, are we, these type of vehicles, are we using these like every day? Are these in full service?
Yes, that's, yeah, that's why we moved away from, like I said, that one dump truck that was sitting, so that we were actually using the vehicles, putting miles on the vehicles, going through the warranty process of vehicles, getting the full use out of them.
Got you. Because I was just thinking, you know, if we have these and if we need to dump type thing, is it better just to lease a one-off use for a dump truck? You know what I mean?
And that was looking at like an F-350 to do the hauling and the pulling, or an F-450, and the F-450 could dump and haul, so it kind of, that's why we took the process.
But these vehicles are moving every day?
Yes.
Okay, that, I just don't, I think that's also part of the white fleet, and we just don't want cars sitting idly, because if that's the case, we have too many and...
Absolutely. We have too many, or we don't have clear process in order for individuals to use them. And I will say, the team has done a really good job with that. That was, we went through some growing pains when we moved the vans, you see the vans across the community that are wrapped in the elementary schools. Those vans used to be at the elementary for the majority of the time. We went through some growing pains where we said, listen, these vehicles aren't moving at the rate that we need to, we need to use these in a different way as well. And so if you know anything about high school activities, they will definitely put some miles on a vehicle. So we do assess that and make adjustments to it if there is a vehicle. But those were the only ones that we ran into that with, and those changes were made, and now that's definitely not the case.
Is there an added to fleet, or is this all replacement? Especially when we're talking about the Explorers or SUVs?
These are all replacements for older vehicles or ones that were planned, like Marcus had mentioned, that we couldn't do last year because of cost, so we pushed it to this year.
So those other vehicles, then we should get some return. I know it's not going to cover all the cost.
Auctioned off.
But we're going to, we're going to be able to send those off to auction to get something.
They're either going to be auctioned off or sent to another department if there's still use in them. So some of them will swap out, like if teaching and learning is, has to get rid of theirs, if a new one is, this is just an example, if a new one is replacing an old one, that old one that's not that old will go to teaching and learning, if that makes sense. So it's a, it's a variety, but for the most part, they're all going to be auctioned.
Okay, so it's not a one-for-one, that's kind of what I was talking about. So it wouldn't be a one-for-one, it would just be, also, we may need to see where there's a potential need as well. And I think that's where probably we need to look at probably moving forward is looking at the need, what the process is, having that process in place of we don't replace the vehicle... the vehicle. We're, we're not adding additional fleet.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause this is what we're potentially doing, is that we're adding fleet, uh, and do we need to do that or not? It's the question that I want us to kind of talk about in the future.
Um, I have a question on the, it's on, uh, page two.
Marcus.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
It's on, um, page two.
When you're asking that, can I ask what the percentage was on that? I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
What was the percentage of us ordering these prior to, um?
I'll have to get that from Mr. Nocero, please.
Cause I appreciate you all, uh, uh, proactive step to that. Thank you.
So the, um, the first line item there, the Belfort USA Group?
Yes.
Um, so now that's a deep cleaning of the restrooms and the front ste- and the front steps and the carpet is, was that, is that, was that part of the, the renovation of the building while we did that? Or was there, was there an actual, like, event there that happened that we had to call?
No, that was a part of, um, for the building.
My, my question is, is that my understanding of this company, Belfort, you know, they are often, uh, known, kind of like, somebody that comes in and does work after a disaster or, you know, really bad situation. They come in fast, they do the work, and they fix it, but they, they send a charge a lot more than potentially other contractors. I just wanted to know how.
So that is typically, um, how we use, um, Belfort. We're also using, um, them for, um, a project at Matanzas to get, get into their locker room. As we all know, we've been hearing, uh, some work that needs to be done, um, there. Um, and then sometimes it is when it is outside of the capacity of our staff that we will bring them in, um, to do it. But our, our typical use for Belfort is, um, when we had the flood, um, at, um, Old Kings, they were the ones that came in. We can bring them in quickly. They do, um, all of that and other, other things that that happens for.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a perfect use case in my mind for Belfort because they, that's what they're.
But they're not a common one that we use just to go in and clean.
Okay.
This was for, um, to ensure that the, um, facility was properly cleaned and up to s- to standard, to be able to bring our students.
So would this be something where there would, where, where, there would have been a bid on it, or was this just a, a direct contract to hire them to do it?
Due, due to the cost, we would only need, uh, three quotes for it. A bid's not required except, uh, for anything over fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. I would just, going forward, uh, to consider some other contractors from a price perspective, because historically, companies like Belfort, uh, Servpro, all those things, they, they charge more for a service. And there may be, uh, they may have a different price point for things like this, right? I've said nothing to compare it against, so I, I don't know, but just knowing the history of the company, they, they advertise themselves like, you know, hey, if your, if your school floods, we'll be there in five minutes. So, so, uh, maybe we might be able to find some, some, uh, lower prices for the same service.
Definitely.
In the future. Um, that's all I have for tomorrow. Any other non-purchase orders? Any other questions or concern? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on.
Thank you.
And, uh, we are gonna go to seven point zero two. This is vendor payments. Um, any, any questions on this one?
I just have one quick question for, not a quick, I'd ask about, was that, or what was that? I'll find it, give me a second. Well, maybe I will.
I know they have, they do the drug screening, but I thought.
You just said urgent care. What, what caught my eye?
It's for the, um.
Is it work comp, maybe?
It's for the DOT physical and drug screening.
Okay. It wasn't a lot. It was just caught my eye. It was like, uh, urgent care and stuff like that, what it was tied to.
And now we'll be using Marathon, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. There isn't anything further. We'll move on. Seven point zero three. Um, this is, uh, approval of deletion of inventory.
Might see some cars on this.
Should.
There was.
Junk cannibalized. Nothing for sale on this list. Okay. Um, seven point zero four, uh, request approval for, uh, finance budget amendments. Hearing none, we'll, uh, move on. Seven point zero five, uh, approval of professional development travel.
So this was everything that was, was past year?
This is everything from Jan- from Jan- from January through June that has been submitted. Um, as you recall, we had to stop paying out until we got the, um, policy updated. So you'll start to see a lot more next year, I mean, next month too, for twenty-four, twenty-five. And then you will see this monthly as you previously had.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move on to seven point zero six. This is for, for approval of district financial statement.
I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit to, uh, your evaluation of the release of the budget for this upcoming year. Uh, and I was just curious, you know, obviously, we went through the whole, um, teacher pay contract, all of this, which doesn't really align when we get the, the, the new budgets. Is that something that we can align in the future? Or, uh, is that kind of out of our control? So first question, uh, uh, what are, what's your analysis of the released budget? And what should we be particularly paying attention to? Um, and, uh, with the freezes, is there, I know you've sent an email about, uh, how we're mitigating that. Anything we should be aware of regarding what needs immediate attention on those?
Can I hit the second question first? And then, cause the first question's gonna take a little more time. Um, a few years ago, maybe three, um, years, we have tried to get ahead of the, um, negotiation, um, sessions because, um, prior to that, we would get very close to the Octo- is it October fifteenth? Um, I think that's the date. I, I've forgotten the date because I'm like, we're not getting anywhere near the date. Whereas we have to have an agreement with our, um, teachers' union around how we're going to, um, utilize those dollars. And we've had to, my previous superintendent has had to go before the state board, and they wanna know why, uh, why haven't you gotten these dollars in the hands of our teachers? And so we've gotten ahead of it in order to ensure we had enough time to be able to meet those deadlines and have an adequate, um, amount of time to be able to properly budget and, um, negotiate with our, our unions. That's why that timeline is off that way. And, uh, we take, you know, and use our projections of what we have. We work very closely, uh, with our, um, our lobbyists in order to have a good anticipation of what it's going to look like so that we can stay, uh, within budget. But, you know, this year was one of those years that I, I think for our unions, especially, you saw it happen in some other counties, that it was be- better for them to agree before the budget was released. Because once the budget is released, there may not have, be as much as what was offered. And so we, we've worked collaboratively with our unions in order to, um, just make sure that we can hit the August, I mean, October first deadline, um, and get the dollars in the hands of our employees, as is the direction from the state. So that's why that timeline is off that way.
And just to, um, add on to that, since Superintendent Moore came on board, that was the first year that we have ever closed. This year's the second year that we closed prior to June thirtieth. We used to close in September, January, the following year. It just created a lot of discord. People don't get their increases until halfway through the year. Um, so we have worked really hard with our union to make sure that we meet that deadline of June thirtieth and don't go into the next fiscal year. So when the year starts, we are already done. Um, to answer your question about, um, the budget, the key is student enrollment, as you know. Um, as I talk about in our budget meetings, just because we may be considered a property-rich county, we don't benefit from that because the property value revenue has inverse relationship to the state funding. So that is a big misconception for many people. Um, so student enrollment is really what we have to re- rely on. Um, we talked many times in cabinet about marketing our district, getting back, we have a plan that, um, our superintendent is working on to, um, offer classes à la carte style, to try to get some homeschool kids back, scholarships, uh, kids back. The scholarships has taken over the state. Um, the numbers of, had increased over the past couple of years. It's just, uh, crazy and very scary for, for, for many school districts. Um, we will know that we will be using some of our fund balance to balance the budget. That was agreed upon during a union, um, conversations with the board. And we will be using capital transfers as we always do to balance our budget, um, to, and to try to continue to build a healthy fund balance and not have it decrease so, so much. I can tell you right now, we're still in the middle of trying to balance it. Um, we are, my staff is going through the departments right now. We have already cut four percent from all the departments, um, and, um, backed off on, um, on, uh, teachers where the enrollment was not there per the FTE projection that was done. We probably will most likely have to add going forward, depending on where the numbers come in once we start school and get past our, uh, tenant count. The budget meeting is scheduled for the twenty-second. I'll know a whole lot more in a week, and then that will be presented to you all in two weeks after reviewing with our superintendent.
And if I can add one piece to that, that, um, over the next two weeks or so will become very frustrating for our schools, is that we are staffing based on what we are forecasted for. And so for them, they may say, well, I have a hundred more students enrolled than what we have forecast. Well, for us, we have to wait for that ten day in order to ensure that not just at your school, but across the district, we are, are staffed appropriately. And so we're, we're not gonna be negligent, and we are going to monitor the numbers. We're gonna look at historical data. We're gonna look at how many students with, typically withdraw within the first, um, uh, ten days of, of school, like all of those pieces. But over the next two weeks, our, our schools will begin to, um, I'm sure they will begin reaching out to us. They're already putting in their staffing requests, so we're not stopping them for putting in their requests, but we are being very hesitant to hire based on just the numbers that we currently have, because we know that there's, there's shifts that happen. So we are, right now, we are staffing based on what we are forecasted for by the state, telling, essentially saying, the state says we're gonna have this many students, so that's many, how many students that we are staffing for and not beyond that.
And that's how much money.
That's how much money we're gonna get.
And we appreciate the understanding of our parents, guardians, and students, because it inevitably means, uh, there are gonna be a lot of students who's, when they are assigned to teacher, that is not going to be their teacher.
There may be shifts, absolutely.
For their whole quarter. There, there are gonna be shifts. And so that is the benefit of common planning and common curriculum, common, uh, lesson plans. So there's some continuity there, but, uh, you know, we have to do that to be financially responsible.
We have to. And this is, um, I would say, the first time in, um, some time that we absolutely have to in order to ensure that we are not, um, beyond just over-budgeting, but that we are, um, aligning our staff to what our numbers say. To your point, um, Ms. Ruddy, we have had the luxury for, uh, for some time across the state with some of the additional federal dollars that have been provided through, um, uh, covert release and all of those, to have some things that were nice to have, some really great things. But we're at that place that we have to really look and say, what are the, um, mandatory things that we have? And then from there, what are some nice-to-have things that we can also, um, have? Cause there, there are some things that we will continue to have, right? We know that we are committed to having, um, literacy coaches at our schools, right? We, that's not an area where, where we're pulling back to say, we're only gonna give what, within what the, um, the allocation allows for, or those schools that are, uh, performing at a certain level. So we, we have to be able to identify, what are those, um, things that are beyond mandatory that we can continue to need in order to, to provide a high level of, um, educational opportunities to our students?
Thank you.
But it's gonna get tight. And people are gonna be very, uh, it's gonna be uncomfortable. And we know that we have, uh, professional learning with, um, all of our district staff members. Uh, Thursday, we're, we will reiterate that. We will tell them, we're in this together. We understand, um, but they are not going to want to hear that, for sure. But we have to be responsible.
Administrative staff?
Yeah, we will have our administrators there, our, and when I, when I mean, school-based as well as, um, department-based as well, operational and academic.
I think the communication piece, again, we talk about that a lot, but I think we have to be, again, transparent about what the, the climate that we're in, so everyone understands that we're trying to make every effort. We don't wanna hire people and say, well, sorry, you know, we don't let you go. That's, that's not how we wanna do business.
And that is something that we try, we, we have been intentional, I'm not gonna use the term try, that we've been very intentional to make sure we're having conversations with all of our district leaders around the impacts of the budget. This is not just a school thing. This is schools, these are departments. It's all of us where we have to all be working together in order to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible. And so it's gonna cause all of us to get, you know, squeeze in some in order to ensure that we are being fiscally responsible, and that we are also leaving room, um, so that this board can continue to have priorities like making our, our health insurance benefits an actual benefit, having, um, dollars that we can utilize in order to negotiate with our unions as far as salaries and those things. So all of those things, we have to take into account now over the ne- I think our first budget, um, meeting is, is it July twenty-second?
Yes.
July twenty-second, we'll, um, have that for the board, and we'll have a lot of discussions around what we're doing in order to ensure that we're, we're, we've balanced the budget and we're being responsible.
I did community member reach out to say, well, why don't we enact a similar kind of buyback program, uh, where essentially you offer early retirement to, uh, those who are more seasoned and thus making more, um, on the salary scale. Uh, that is not something that aligns with the state, um, a lot, well, not within our, I don't know if you could speak a little bit to that to help educate the community around some of those limitations on what we can offer?
Yeah, and I, um, I wanna say it was the year going into, it was the year of COVID that we offer.
And the following.
And the following year, we off.
Nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one.
Yeah, well, you'll talk about that time, and then I'll talk about what, what it has been our priority.
So we, we did do that coming out of COVID, um, and there were a, a lot of people that took, took that, um, took, took that early payout. In twenty-one, in twenty-twenty-one, we did it again, um, and there was several more that, uh, took it. I will tell you that we've offered this historically in the past a couple of years in a row. The amounts, and I'd have to dig through my data, but it wasn't a significant cost savings. Because what you're looking at now, some of the people who took it were not always the most seasoned ones. They weren't the ones who were, who were making the most money. Um, the people who did take it also had very, very large leave payouts, too. So there's many different factors that go into it to determining whether it's really gonna be, um, uh, cost savings.
And doesn't our contribution towards FRS and some of those other things still linger even after they're under our employ? Or is that, then they're released to the state and it just gets rolled into our general contribution?
Yeah, once, once they retire or leave, our FRS contribution stops.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah. And when we think about leave payout specifically, that is another piece that we budget into what's, um, historically, or, um, looking at our data to say, how many individuals do we anticipate, um, leaving the organization? What will that cost be? So all of those pieces. So it just hasn't been something that we've done since, um, those years, um, coming out of, coming out of COVID, going into COVID, whichever way you wanna look at it, um, it's not something that we've done. We also want, we, we value having seasoned educators on our, 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 um, team. That is, um, evident if you look at our staffing, our, I mean, our salary matrix, um, that it is beneficial to work for Flagler Schools as a seasoned educator. And I, I, I love reading different articles and research, and, you know, there is a lot that is being said about those of us who are in that fifteen years or higher around being the last, um, role of those lifetime educators happening. And so there's a lot of, um, knowledge that those individuals, um, bring to the organization, and we wanna hold on to them, um, as much as possible.
How many, how many retirees do we actually have that have said, you don't wanna come back to work? Do we have a lot of those within the district?
I don't have that. I don't have that data. Do you know about?
I can get that for you, exact numbers. If not, as far as our retirees, if not a significant number.
Retired in the Florida retirement system period?
What we more likely have, if they did retire, they retired from out of state.
Okay.
And then they come to us from out of state because they don't have to sit out the six months.
The only reason I'm saying that is, is something for a potential legislative is if they are retired in the Florida retirement system and they come back to work, we're still having to pay their portion into their retirement, even though they are not even eligible to receive it.
That's just, yeah, that's our legislative.
That's surprising.
Yes.
Excuse me. Okay, well, let's move on here. 7.07.
This is just a wrap-up that we do every year. The auditors look at this, just to give them the final payroll check number, direct deposit, accounts payable. And that's just information purposes for the board and the auditors would just like to see that it was on here.
On here, okay. All right. Well, I think that wraps us up here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So academic services, we are going to go to 9.01, mental health plan. And Ms. Williams and Finelli, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman Furry, School Board, Superintendent Moore. We are here before you today to give you the wrap-up of the 2425 mental health plan, give you some of the data and the outcomes that went along with it, as well as to share with you the new plan for the 2526 school year and the budget for that plan as well. So this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Coordinator of Counseling Services, Ms. Williams, to give you the last year review and the year look forward.
Yes. Good afternoon, Board, Chair Furry and Superintendent Moore. So we are going to be intentional about our time this afternoon. I do want to go over just the final numbers that we typically bring to the board at the end of the school year in terms of how many students receive services and that kind of data, as well as go over the information for the new mental health plan. So I always start with what our mental health plan looks like because it's a good reminder, just like what we're talking about in general, how the mental health plan is communicated. So our mental health plan, just like every other intervention service or is a multi-tiered system of supports, which means that when we've identified that a student has a need, we want to identify what level of need they need and then link them with the right level of care. So tier one services are services that all students have access to. Tier two services are students who might be showing that they're having some mild dysfunction or something's going on for them. They're having a difficult time regulating potentially their emotions. And our school counselors are providing tier two interventions for those students. Our tier three services are services that are provided to students who have a mental health diagnosis of some type, generally. And those services are being provided by our licensed clinicians on staff. And then tier three intensive services are services, the tippy-top of the triangle for a very small percentage of our students that require wraparound services. And those are services that they may not just be getting outpatient therapy or may not be just getting medication management, but they also may be working with other agencies in the community for things like targeted case management. And they may be involved with DCF or DJJ and those kinds of agencies as well. So that's what our mental health plan generally looks like at each one of the tiers. So our data trend that I want to start with is our tier two data. Obviously, tier one data are all of our students. So all of our students get access to that. So what I want to show you is, at this time, is the numbers of all our students who access tier two and tier three services for the school year. So you will see our data trend, obviously, this last school year at the bottom significantly going up. The reason for that is for multiple reasons. I think we talked about this. Last year, we saw a significant jump in our data for tier two. We're seeing another significant jump in our data for tier two for a couple of reasons. One, we are being very intentional with supporting our staff and making sure that they're identifying and acknowledging all the work they're doing. They've been doing all this work where they're supporting students for emotional regulation and providing those counseling tier two services, but they weren't always probably documenting it in the right place. So we've been very intentional about having them slow down and make sure that if they're providing a tier two mental health service, that it's getting documented and getting recorded in the right place so that at the end of the year in September, we're able to report the numbers back to the state. That yes, we are using all of the resources we have on campus to provide mental health services for our students. So that's why you're seeing a significant jump in this year's numbers. Additionally, I think what you'll see in the next slide is you'll see our tier three number kind of taking a little bit of a dip. And that means the program's working properly, right? Not every student is going straight to a tier three service where they're being linked to a clinical service. All students don't need necessarily a clinical service. So we're catching them earlier and we're providing an intervention to help them avoid going to a tier three service. That's the goal at the end of the day. So we see a slight dip in our number this year for tier three for that reason as well. Tier three intensive data, same information. So our tier three intensives, we are seeing a slight dip in that number as well. These are students who are generally engaged in, like I said, those wraparound services. So the most common program that we're using are HPS CAT team or our community action team where they're getting just a lot of additional services for the family as well. Any questions on those numbers?
Just to reiterate what Ms. Williams was saying, the increase in tier two and the decrease in tier three and tier three intensive are great numbers. It shows that we're intervening earlier before students get to a point of significant crisis. So it's encouraging to see those numbers trending down towards tier two and out of the tier three or intensive range.
So what is that, about eight or nine percent of our student body? Is that in line with other typical numbers? Or are we, you know, do we have a little bit of a crisis in this county? Or is that aligned with averages?
Yeah, I would definitely say that it aligns with averages across districts. These are students who are identified and have consented to services. I just want to bring awareness and attention to that as well, right? So it doesn't necessarily mean that there are not other students in our district who may need support in that way, but they're not being identified through our mental health system. Maybe their parents are taking them outside of a referral for services through the school district. So the next slide down really focuses on kind of the trend over the past several years around identification for services. And you can see, of course, in that trend, it has gone up as well. So the total students identified this past year is 1,863. 1,851 were referred. That just means that those are the families who requested that we refer for a service. Those are the families that signed a consent that wanted to be referred to an agency. 1,474 of those actually received a service. And that bottom number at the, in the black bar, the 229, those are students referrals who are still open at this point. So we don't know the final outcome of them as of right now. We follow every referral until it closes. So when those outcome measures come in, they'll populate in where they need to be. In voluntary examination data, this is specifically also known as our Baker Act trend. So what you'll see across several years at this point is the large green box is the Flagler County Baker Acts that happened. Those are county-wide. The blue bar is everybody who's under the age of 18 that unfortunately in Flagler County has been Baker acted in the past year. And then the gray bar are the numbers that are happening on campus. So as you can see, if you look at 2019 to 2020, we're obviously up from that because that was the year where we missed a final quarter. And unfortunately, that's a lot of times when we see a larger number of our Baker Acts is as the quarters wrap up. But we are down from last year. Again, intervening early, de-escalating, we are required according to statute to de-escalate a student prior to Baker acting a student.
Is this a number of incidences or number of students? Like if a student is Baker acted more than once, are they, do they appear twice?
Great question. It's number of incidences. So it could be one student five times or right, right.
I'd be interested to see that number for 2526 though, because it looks like we may see, it looks like it was up then come down and now we're trending back up just overall in Flagler County. It's kind of interesting. I'd say it's interesting, that's probably the appropriate word, but.
It's revealing.
And then the 18 and younger.
Yeah, that number has gone up.
That's continuously going up. That's a little concerning.
And all that data is available on the DCF website as well. Okay, so moving forward, we're going to transition into the mental health plan. So prior to going into the mental health plan, do you want to speak to the?
So yeah, we had some strategic partners that we've been working with that have really supported the needs of our students. And we just would be remiss not to recognize them for all the work that they've done in conjunction with us. Advent Health has been a great partner, supporting through the Ed Foundation and directly to the school district. So we want to recognize them. The Ed Foundation, of course, who's been able to fund positions for us through a grant for the past year. We definitely want to just recognize them as well. And then also just recognizing the fact that we were able to re-up a very large and important grant, the Criminal Justice Mental Health Substance Abuse Grant, which is a DJJ diversion grant across five community agencies. It is a very large and powerful grant that really supports our youth through the sheriff's office, the school district, and our other community partners. So we just want to recognize them and all the work that we're doing as a community to support our youth.
Yeah, I don't know where we'd be without that.
Right, truly, truly.
I don't either. Yeah, I don't either. So moving on, we're going to talk about the 2025, 2026 mental health plan. So every year, we're required to submit a mental health plan. And it's always really tricky in terms of timing because they don't always release the plan for us to be able to complete the plan from DOE until late. And so our access to that is challenging from time to time. So I believe that we uploaded an update this afternoon with our budget. So we were able to complete that piece for your review. The entire budget or the entire plan is there for your review. It is 29 pages long, so I'm not going to go through every item on it, but I am going to go over, obviously, the important parts that we need to know about. So the mental health assistance allocation is the funding source that we use to establish and expand school-based mental health care, train educators about mental health, and connect students for services. The mental health plan overview is broken down here into, it's four separate parts. The first part is plans and assurances. Those assurances have been the same for several years with the exception of one that they've added this year. They add new assurances every time they change or add a statute that we have to be in line with. And the one addition this year is that we are required to have a system in place to measure the program outcomes. We're waiting on a little bit of clarification and language on that one. We already, as you know, track all of our program outcomes. So we identify all of our referrals, whether or not they received a service from each agency that we send them to. That's why we track them the entire time they're open. So we already do that piece. If that's what they're looking for in terms of program outcomes, we're good to go on that. But we are waiting for some more clarification language on that. The next piece down is district program implementation. And so that is your evidence-based practices. We have 16 evidence-based practices that we use across the district. Evidence-based practices are just practices that have been shown to have positive outcomes for students who engage in that particular intervention. And then direct employment focuses on what our policies are around reducing the roles, or excuse me, reducing the ratios for students to have access to school-based mental health providers and policies and roles of the staff members who are providing those services. And it requires that we disclose all of our MOUs for all of our community-based agencies that we refer students to. And then the final piece is the projected budget, which I will turn over to Mr. Finelli to review.
Sure. So we did, like Ms. Williams just said, we just did get our budget numbers. Funding was flat this year. We did not see an increase. We actually saw a slight decrease in funding based off of our protected allocation. Our funding is 90% absorbed in salaries. We were one of a few districts eight years ago that decided to do the work of creating and building an in-house mental health team as a district. A lot of other districts, they just went out to a provider agency, gave them the allocation and said, you know, help support our students. We felt that we could better utilize those funds by hiring internal clinicians and building our own system. And that's what we've done. So we did work very strategically this year to hold back some rollover funds because we knew there were some grants that were sunsetting. So because we did that, we have enough funding to cover staff for this upcoming year. We're going to have to continue to monitor that in moving into years forward. Also, Imagine does their own mental health plan, so they get a portion of the allocation that is dedicated to them, which you'll see in the budget as well, for them to support their own mental health needs on their campus. And there is a small portion of money that basically supports our training needs in regards to state conferences. So you'll see that built into the budget as well. And some funding for youth mental health first aid training moving into the new year to make sure that we're keeping our number of trained staff above the state required 80%.
Is there any research or any data that shows like the differences between, because I feel like based off of what I've seen and the work that you all do and the interaction that we have when we have an issue with our students, how quick we respond and how well I think that we do. Is this a place for a model to some degree, if you will? And is it, going back to my original question, is there like data to show the people who have, you know, basically third-partyed it out compared to what we're doing here? I mean, what does that look like?
Great question. And to Ms. Williams and all the hard work that she's done, she was actually asked by FL DOE this year to present, we presented our plan at the state conference to all the other districts as a model plan. So very proud of that. A little emotional about it. Very proud of the work that we've done over the years. But yes, our plan has been recognized as a model plan by DOE.
Nice. Anecdotally, I'll tell you, a lot of the districts who did pay out, just ask for community providers to come in and do, they have really moved to a model very similar to ours. Because it's just, especially in a community like our community, we don't always have access to enough providers all the time. So the flexibility isn't always there for us. So it made a big difference.
When you say you close out these referrals until they're closed out, when you say "we", is that a mix of like who exactly on the team is, are those like the counselors, like yourself? Like how do you, I mean, it seems like you guys are really like working really closely with these students. Is it just like every single part of your team?
So we have a very specific process that everybody has to follow for the mental health referral procedure, mainly because obviously we need to make sure that we have consent for families or from families to provide those services. We have one administrative person on the team who runs all the referrals through that software system where we can track them. And we meet with our MOU providers on a monthly basis just to make sure that all of those updates are being provided to us in a timely fashion. Our MOUs require that our providers give us an update every month. And so it is, we do stay, you know, linked to them very closely to make sure that we are getting those updates in. And we have that one administrative person who does that. Yeah.
Good question.
It's a very small "we."
Yeah. It sounds like, like just from, like every time you guys present and, you know, the things that we see you do, it sounds like what we're doing obviously is working. We can all, you know, everyone can always do better, but you know, it sounds like we never stop trying to do better and better. So I'm just, you know, obviously I can have more one on one.
And I think it's to, Ms. Williams alluded to it, of having very specific written-out procedures that we follow to ensure that we are moving through the process in order to ensure that our students are getting service in a timely manner. And so just making sure that we have those processes in place because it's not a large team that's doing the administrative side of it. We, our investment is in people being in the field servicing our students. And so the "we" is an administrative employee that we have and Ms. Williams.
And it's working. Just, you know, we've talked about it already, but you know, thank you. You can see the terrible things that have happened, but it, the process, you know.
And we do have, we respond when there are things that happen within our school, also for our families out in the community. And I don't think it's something that a lot of families know unless it's your family that we've had to go and send in support to. And it doesn't matter when those things are happening. If it's during the summer, it's a holiday, it's a weekend, if there's a need that we can meet for our students, we do that.
And I wanted to speak to that because I have heard firsthand from community members just recently and before, but most recently- just recently and before, but most recently, and they specifically mentioned both of your names and how you went to their homes, helped them through, our students were, were dealing with, with a family issue that was, and they said, wow, how much Flagler Schools cares about the families here, and specifically mentioned both your names. So I just wanted to personally thank you for that investment in our children's mental health.
Thank you.
That goes on and on, I'm with you. It has happened multiple times, I've already shared that with you all on several families, but again, kudos to the work that you're doing and the, how you're representing our school district, and especially being able to, to go and, and show it off, so I think that's.
And you don't give up, like, you know, things get really tough and you guys just keep going.
More problem solvers.
And I wanna highlight the Ed Foundation again with that, because sometimes their needs are, are resources that we can't provide on our side of, but we often also partner with the Ed Foundation that can come along and provide some services and some support to families with things that are fundamental things for them to be able to continue, being able to have access to a quality of life, and so we appreciate them and their partnership with us as well.
This is a great partnership.
We rely on them a lot, especially for, there's only so much we can do to help support the emotional process, and then, you know, they still need to have food on the table and, and things that, that everybody needs, right? And so they have been very, they've been a great partner.
All right.
So I think our ask at this, at this point is just to know that on July 22nd, we'll be coming before the board with a request to sign the mental health plan for the 25-26 school year, so that it can be uploaded to the DOE website by August 1st, which is the deadline.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next two items are presentations that we've given at the last meeting, so we will bring Ms. Kirkland forward to answer any additional questions that you have from her, her last presentation, and then we'll do the same thing for, for our comprehensive reading plan, evidence-based reading plan.
Good afternoon, Chair Furry, boards, if you can make more. On the, on June 24th, the Flagler Technical College fee schedule for the 25-26 school year was presented to you in workshop, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have in between that time and now.
No changes from, from that presentation? Any questions?
None from me.
All right.
I do wanna just say, I've had a great opportunity to be able to, again, taunt Flagler Technical College when I was in Washington a few weeks ago, and we were talking specifically about truck driving schools, and I know that's dear to my heart, and they, there may be some other things coming forward with, with that, what that looks like, but there was some interest in the work that you're doing there, so stay tuned is my point.
Oh, wow.
And also, you know, sent some stuff about some grants to you as well, I know you're looking into that, but hopefully we'll be able to help offset some of the work that, that your folks are doing. And again, this morning, this is probably not the time, if it's time for this or not, but we saw some of the staff that I know they're taking part of what you're presenting here with fees and so forth, and they were doing a good job with some of the little ones today going swimming, so while we were there, so. Kudos to them for taking about.
My kids are at that camp, so I, I appreciate all, like, everything, the space camp.
Two busloads.
Two busloads of them.
I know, and they're going back Thursday, there's an astronaut coming, or, you know.
It's a great job.
Yeah, so, and very reasonable fee structure across the board, it's, you know, I don't, I can't think of any, you know, group institution that can put on the quality and variety at that cost.
Or that cost.
Yes.
I, I had to look twice and I even double-checked, like, this is, and it's, we're, we're not at the max, we're right in the middle too, right? So, very good, excellent.
Again, I'll go back to this a third time, I think I've mentioned it today, but how do we communicate that piece out to, to get a lot of additional people in here, because you're providing a lot of different things at low cost that would be beneficial to different segments of the community, so it's more, I see you're writing down there, but.
Well, they have, they give facials back, yeah, I mean, they, very affordable.
Then we should do a, a board PSA, and we'll all go there and get some sort of service or engagement.
Like we did from Metanasis.
That'd be fun.
And Ryan's daughter who was in the program.
I'll get a pedicure.
I thought, I used to participate in some Zumba, and I also did a, stood at the summer school, as, when I was a teacher, I was pregnant, so I was not as fast on my feet, it was exhausting, but yeah, it was fun. Everything is very activity-based with the kids.
I'm glad that you mentioned.
We took them to Daytona 500 that year.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned the Zumba, because this morning we talked a little bit about that, it's time to bring some of those wellness classes that we used to have years ago, bring them back, so if you, you know, if you're talented in some type of wellness skill, you know, reach out to Renee and Mr. Oulet, because I think we got a perfect space to be able to offer some of those wellness, and I heard that Mr. Oulet's gonna teach the yoga.
Oh, really?
I heard that.
He volunteered to do yoga, so.
I saw that on the list, yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Great job.
And the same for our lovely ladies that are gonna come and talk about the comprehensive evidence-based reading plan.
We'll come back.
Scott, we brought Mr. Reynolds. Disregard my voice, we had a rowdy recess today celebrating kids who passed their summer school today. So we have two more days, but some students are not done yet, but this is rowdy recess. And we brought Mr. Reynolds with us to answer the data that we had questions about last time, and then we'll take questions on the survey.
Yeah, so one of the pieces that you were looking for was capacity for a BPK, and this isn't like as of today, but as of like a week or so ago, we had about 33 spots across the district open at Old Kings, Remfire, and Benel. The other schools were full, but there wasn't anyone on the waiting list as of a couple weeks ago. And as we keep getting more students on our waiting list, we are working with schools to hopefully identify more space to open up more rooms. We just opened up a room in Oaks because they had a, a large waitlist.
Are the waiting lists school-specific or are they district-wide?
They are school-specific, but I believe that at some point, they opened it up and they say, we see you're on this waiting list, we have availability at this school.
Yes, that is exactly what happened. We will offer that, they can stay on the waitlist, waiting list if they would like, but we offered them a spot in one of the open schools.
Do we have an idea on how that enrollment and waitlist is comparing to the private groups offering BPK?
I did have that information. Dr. O'Brien, do you remember, we, I just met with DJ Levo from Early Learning Coalition, and she gave the number of students that we had last year on some form of wait, but I do not have a weekend, weekend ass that. What we do know is over the last two years, we have opened up additional space because there were individuals that weren't able to get spots within the community. And so we're being very mindful of that, we don't want to appear to be the big district that's coming in and swooping up, you know, all of the BPK students, because we do have our private providers that we are in partnership with, but we will open classes as we are able to fill those classes. And so these 30-plus spots, we will definitely get those, all of them will be, will be full by the end, and we will likely need to look at and begin to discuss the need to open additional class.
Thank you.
The other piece of data was about how students who attend BPK with Flagler and how they perform in future years, and the difference between students who go to our BPK and who don't. And we did some digging, and we found for this year's results for our kindergarten students, that students who attended Flagler pre-K had a 9% higher median percentage scale score and a 6% higher pass rate than students who did not attend Flagler BPK. And then it continues on in grade one, grade two, and even in grade three, the higher pass rate was 3% higher than students who didn't go to Flagler BPK and pre-K, or sorry, and kindergarten, than students who did not.
That's great.
Those are some, that's great that we have factual measurements there, and that's again, something that we can tote that we're the best choice for BPK.
Put that out there.
And kindergarten, to be honest.
And keep going.
Okay, so what questions can we answer about the reading plan?
Any other questions? All right.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Good to see you.
Appreciate the update on those figures there. Okay, so that leaves us now to BPK fee schedule, 9.04.
That's me, Mr. Reeves is on vacation.
Okay.
So I'm filling in for him. Did they present this last time? That's just, okay. So this is just the fee schedule for BPK, and you kind of, if you scroll down to the bottom is really where the numbers are. It is $70 per week, and if there's ever a week that has less school days, it is prorated for that.
For wraparound specifically.
Yes, this is for wraparound.
Is there any increases?
I am not sure, but I can get back to that. I don't have last year's.
And there's still the late fee, dollar per minute, so you pick up the kids, so you gotta leave work again. And again, kind of comparing to what's out there privately, you know, how does that wraparound, because we know the state supplements that program, but that seems very, very economical, so I'm just wondering, have we analyzed, should we be charging a little bit more because the private offerings are so much higher, just so that we can, you know, stay afloat a little bit better?
I am, I, we will have that, we will provide that to you when we bring this back before you.
Okay.
Of, of what has been and what data we can pull of what the wraparound cost is for other programs. See how good we are.
Any other questions on this one?
No, sorry.
Okay, so then we'll move on. And so now we are at student travel consent.
Yes, so we have a chorus trip from FPC and a chorus trip from Metanasis. And Metanasis is going to the Lincoln Center with their chorus group, and then we have a couple FFA trips, one to the Sunbelt Ag Expo and one to the Chapter Presidents Conference.
Any questions on that?
I never had these school field trips.
Now you get to approve them for other kids.
So we can always go on them anyway.
I think it's supposed to be great.
I know, when the steel band were, when they were going to Hawaii, I, I said to them, you invited me to Chaperone in Tampa, not to Chaperone in Hawaii, there is something wrong with that, or Inky West. Yes, a lot of great experiences for our students.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Let's see, so now we are at human resources, 11.01, student teacher affiliation agreement, and this is Mr. Robertson presenting. Affiliation with University of Central Florida.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mark.
Good afternoon. Okay, well, we, we reviewed the agreement, and as I stated the last time I was up here, our attorney made quite a few corrections to it. We sent it to UCF, they received it a little over a month ago, and they have not returned that agreement for our approval. However, we have been actively reaching out to them and trying to figure out what the, what the delay is. They've just told us that they are reviewing it.
So is this just here as a placeholder, and if we don't get that, we'll pull it from?
Yeah, they have a lot of area, yes. And if it's not, if we do not have it when we go live, then we will pull it. If we have enough time that we can put it on both, we will consider that, but if we don't have it within that timeframe, then it will not be for your approval until August.
And I, I do know they've got a student they wanted to place with us, which is why they were pushing us. They did, they do, so they've been pushing us to get it done. However, we did make a large number of changes to the agreement, and I think that's probably was delaying the approval, because they've got to review it all.
I think the one attached, it might be missing pages in here, is it, just to note on the future ones, obviously, it's in good hands, but, you know, when it comes up, when the final item.
Yes.
Quite a few things were put on there. I do think that Mr. Smith is doing a good job of reviewing these. We've had several come in that will be put forth in the next, probably the next month or so. In particular, I know we've got one from West Florida that was sent off, but what we've been doing since we've had Mr. Smith, we've been reviewing them very diligently and having him kind of make all the corrections to them to ensure that we are not putting ourselves in a precarious situation. And then we, they bring it to me, after Mr. Smith gets it, I'm sorry, he makes the revisions, I send it back to them, and what they will do is they'll, they'll make the changes, bring it back, and then we'll look at it again. And so we've developed a, a better process of vetting them since Mr. Smith has been here, and so it's taken us a little bit longer to get them ready for board approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So 11.02, request board approval of personnel items. Mr. Olet.
Chair, board, this is a kind of sparse personnel action report. There will be additional forthcoming as we are now in the midst of hiring season and onboarding, and there will be several additions as we.
Your time to shine, right?
Yeah.
It is our busy season.
Good question. The first item, Efren Gutierrez, it says effective date is in 2023.
Oh, that's.
And it says the new replacement is Mr. Kronk. Am I reading that right? Because I thought Mr. Kronk.
Well, is it newer or replacement? He is a replacement, he is replacing Mr. Kronk.
And I wonder if.
An effective date.
Okay, so the appointment is Mr., I see.
And so he had an original hire date of 2023, and he left the organization and returned, so we need to change, that's why the 2023 date was in there. That's a error migrating over from Skyward.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. We're gonna take a, a five-minute recess. The meeting, welcome. We're on Agenda Item sixteen point zero one, Code of Student Conduct. We have Mr. Glasgow, Mr. Finelli.
Good evening, Chairman Furry, School Board Superintendent Moore. I come before you this evening with Mr. Glasgow. We are in the home stretch of revisions to student code of conduct. So he's gonna go over just the final updates and then answer any questions you may have before July twenty-second vote.
All right, Mr. Glasgow.
Good afternoon, Board, good afternoon Superintendent Moore. I'd just like to, so I gave you a clean version and an edited version on board docs for your review. This presentation is all of the revisions all together. We're not gonna review thirty-nine pages today. We are gonna take a look at two though, so, Nye, could you go to page fourteen? And this was a revision to the revision. So these documents are shared out with all stakeholders to include within our district. So some of the feedback that was given is that when certain law violations or activities occur off-campus, it may be addressed in accordance with our school district policy and state statute. It was much longer before and had a whole bunch there. And the conversation was that we were boxing ourselves in. So when things occur off-campus, it's not necessarily a discipline action that could happen. It could be mental health support, it could be behavior contracts, it could be something other than punitive consequence. So we didn't just want to say that we're gonna, consequence, we want to say that we're gonna follow our procedure. So that would be the one change that's here on this one. And then, Nye, if you could go all the way down to page thirty-eight. So on this one, the only thing that was added and it was feedback that Dr. O'Brien had collected at one point, and it's just directing our families where to find the medication forms and how to be able to have their prescription, non-prescription medication given. So we needed to collect that. Other than that, that will wrap up the twenty-five, twenty-six school year's code of conduct revisions. Does the team have any questions for me?
All right. Good luck.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've already done seventeen oh one, so we're gonna move to Human Resource Services, eighteen point zero one. School Choice Specialist Job Description.
Good evening, Board Superintendent Moore. We brought this to you at the information session. So as School Choice Specialist, this would be a new job description, but a current allocation already would be dedicated to this. So it's not a, it's not a new staffing allocation needed. Do you have any questions?
I'm sorry, can you clarify that for me? And I apologize, I know I wasn't there at that last meeting due to vacation. So when you say that this is not a new staffing allocation, we have a person on staff, is what you're saying? Or you just, are you removing one title and replacing it with this?
Yeah, we have a current vacancy in, it's called a Student Engagement Specialist Position, which is more of a clerical position as kind of like a homeschool liaison. And so what we're trying to do is replace that allocation with a School Choice Specialist.
So are we retiring that role? Or is it you're putting on hold and if in the future we have budget funds for that?
It would sunset right now and this role would replace it.
Okay, and so the other role being more clerical, this salary lane says POW four, what's the difference there?
This is a professional lane. I believe the salary difference starts around twenty-five thousand dollars different.
Higher on this one.
It would be an increase, yes.
And just, I know with previous meetings, I know this was already allocated, the budget, it's already budgeted for. Was the additional cost that was budgeted for as well for when you did the budget for just for this meal?
Yes, and this position has, it was filled and it was vacant, so it has sat vacant for some time. And now we do believe that this position better represents what that individual will be doing in the role this job description does.
I, my hope is, is that this, this position actually has a real return on investment. You know, I mean, from a monetary standpoint. You know, we can't put that necessarily, that benchmark on all of our positions, obviously, because there's different outcome expectations. But this one here, my hopes is that, you know, we'll be able to balance and recapture some of those choice dollars, whether it's through the hybrid or whether it's through full return to school or whatever the option the parent wants. But I just think it's a, that parents just need to get the right information to make the right choices, right? So.
Well, in other districts I mentioned, they have this similar role. So it's, I think, you know, just what I talked about last time. So I just know there've been a lot of questions, but it sounds like it was already budgeted, but yeah.
So to be clear, your question, Ms. Ramirez, is that the twenty-five thousand dollar extra has been budgeted? And that's, you're confirming that?
Yes.
Okay. And so to clarify, because I do want to make sure that this role doesn't become like, basically, this is a liaison to tell me how to get out of the school system, right? So what is the goal, what does this look like in application? Is it that, hey, when, when people are submitting requests to potentially leave or change, this role would consult with those individuals? Or so is it, or is it trying to be even more proactive than that? What, what's the vision here?
So right now, we, we don't have, with, with the School Choice landscape changing, we don't have a dedicated contact at our district that is working to help families and all of us kind of navigate these non-traditional pathways. So when a call comes in, we're, we're fielding it and we have, we have been learning the new information as we go and working with our schools to get these students enrolled in courses. So this person would really be responsible for keep, keeping up to date on all of that, the changing legislation, the intricacies or what we can and can't do with the scholarship spending and, and really being that point of contact that's going to help families and students navigate the range of options that they have. And we, you know, along with it, we are, you know, in the midst of creating a communication and marketing campaign. And so that person would really be carrying that out for the district.
And a couple more specific things as well. Right now, when someone says that they're gonna be leaving the, the school district to go to homeschool, we, we say thank you and that's it, right? But this person will be there to partner with those families, to provide them with information, to be really a liaison that they can come to and get information. One of the things that we get some complaints about from families who want to do some mixtures of options is they're getting conflicting information because we don't have those, that identified person. And so this person will be an identified person that our families will be able to go to and be able to get the information that they need. And then this person will work with our schools in order to ensure that the process is going to be a smooth process. Being proactive, I see this person out in the community alongside me, talking about the options of, that we offer within Flagler Schools, meeting with our private providers, meeting with our homeschool co-ops, meeting with our, our families and our other partners around what are the options and what is, what does it look like in order for them to be able to come and be a part of what we're doing while also, also maybe choosing something else or how to transition from one to the other. It's extremely complex when a student is coming as what we call non-traditional to ensure that we're following the right, we are providing them with the right information to put them on the right track based on the goals that those families have. So when it talks about our guiding principles, commitment to individual needs, the purpose of those scholarships is to individualize the experience for the students. And so this person will be there working with those families in order to make sure that we're understanding what their end goal is so that we can help to provide them with the appropriate options that we have within the school district that they can take advantage of.
So instead of losing all of the student, per se, and we get a portion of that student back potentially with some of this help of them saying, oh, well, you can take this class or this class or be a part of this.
I just had a parent, this, I was, right after the parade, I was walking and the parent said, I reached out to one of the middle schools about doing a hybrid and they told me that I couldn't, couldn't do that. And I was like, no, you absolutely can't, but you know, is the person, does the person that they're speaking with know exactly what the information was versus like, who's that point of contact for, to be able to provide the true, the accurate information of what the options are?
So a couple of things there. I think the first person that most parents are gonna go to is a guidance counselor. They need to be equipped with information, which.
Absolutely.
We have this information, can be distributed down, it can be just like you do with teachers and their curriculum. What I don't want this to turn into is that we are fronting a position that is essentially the liaison for, you know, our concierge for all of the options that essentially if there's a homeschool option out there, they should fund their, their concierge. I would like to see this wrapped around some performance metrics. For example, after two years, if we don't see an X number of return or maintenance of students lost, then we reevaluate this position. Because otherwise, this is essentially a go-to person to advertise, well, what are the ways that I can exit or reduce potentially my involvement with Flagler Schools? Again, that's an assumption, but if we center some performance metrics around this for us to determine if this was a smart move to reflect on later, that I think is important.
Absolutely.
Well, I would add, I guess it's just a matter of perspective and how you look at it. I see it as an opportunity to show them on ways they can stay with Flagler Schools, not to leave. It is, it is a place where rather than just a parent just saying, okay, I'm just gonna go with this and take my voucher and I'll figure it out on my own and then realize later, oh, you know, I, I didn't realize I could have done that hybrid. If that, if that was, it's almost like an exit interview. If a parent's already meeting with us at this point, they've made up their mind that they're either doing this or they're exploring the idea of it. So that gives us an opportunity to re-educate the parent on exactly what we offer and the value of either staying in or doing that hybrid. I don't necessarily, I mean, just by the virtue of the employment, I would hope that this person's not an advocate for just sending people away, but we just want people to have the right information so they can make the best decision. And that's the lens that I see this position doing. And also, I think this position should also be advertised to the community because we also have an issue of parents that are coming to the district, but they're never coming, they're not coming here first, right? They're going straight in to something else. So that if we could be almost like, you know, you have the, it's almost like the tourist bureau in, in a community, right? Where do you go, right? This could be that, that little grand central for new families coming in that wanna see what, what the, and I'm not saying we're gonna, we're gonna give out brochures for everybody, every other place around town, but at least we can advocate for the value that we offer, so.
Right, and that's my, my hope as well. And so putting metrics around a particular role that we're resurrecting and contributing an extra twenty-five thousand dollars to per year, it helps us to later evaluate if this was the right move, if it moved the needle in those directions or did it not, right? And because honestly, I'm not an advocate right now of adding additional administrative roles when our student population is decreasing, right? We shouldn't have additional administrative roles when our total population is decreasing and/or our teacher roles are decreasing. So if this is an investment role, then it should come with a monitoring of the health of that investment.
I, we agree with that, and we have discussed that, and I completely agree with you. And it is an investment in more ways than the students coming back to us, but to ensure that we are accurately reporting the students that we are servicing and how we are servicing them. And there are very different requirements for the different types of students that we are servicing. And prior to that, prior to this position, that has been the responsibility of, of someone at, in our opinion, that was not in the right category of employees that should be doing that, that type of work. So it's definitely an investment to ensure that we are properly reporting our students so we're getting from the state and/or from the families the funding that we should be getting in order to service, based on the students that we're servicing, right? We have a hundred, last year we had a hundred and seventy-nine students that we reported as service, that we were servicing them, but those students were also on the list to get a scholarship. Well, those hundred and seventy-nine students, the state says to us, no, you gotta, you gotta get your money from over here. And so this person will be on the front end of that as well. We've added to our registration a question that says, do you receive a form of scholarship? That person will then be able to work directly with that family to identify what scholarship do you have? What services are you be, are you going to be taking advantage of? And this is the process for you to pay for those services that you're, you're getting. So the return on investment is not just about attracting students back into our, our district because that's one part of it, but it's also to accurately report and capture the students that we're already servicing that we may not have been getting the funding for that we should be.
We need three people to actually just come into the district and I hope it'll pay for itself. To be honest.
I mean, to be honest, we have registrars, we have MIS people who all relate to those roles as well, Mr. Varso. To, I think, we don't wanna, what I don't want there to be is a false picture that we don't have some systems or personnel in place related to the maintenance and reporting of student enrollment.
Oh, that, that is not what I am saying at all, but I will tell you that this is an area that we. that we, we need to make an investment and to ensure that we are properly capturing our students and the way that we are servicing them. And it comes multiple ways that we go about doing that.
I don't know if we do this yet, but like, the families that are not in the public school, I'd like to see this person reaching out and saying, "Hey, I see you have someone going into high school. Come see what we have to offer, come to this open house."
Yeah, we should have School Choice Day and come in like, again, this is what we're offering.
So what I see in our families coming in is a lot of times families come in from out of state and they go right to home education. And they come in and say, "Hey, I want to home educate my child." And they don't even know that we provide all these options. A lot of times they say, "I want to home educate, and I'm going to do it virtually through FLBS", not even realizing that we have an in-district virtual program that we could offer them. So it's really, instead of just having somebody that's in a managerial role to do the paperwork, this person will say, "Hey, welcome to Flagler County Schools. We understand that you're interested in home education. Are you interested in a virtual model? Do you know that Flagler County Schools offers a virtual, in-district virtual program that will provide you a device, that will provide you with additional support from local teachers?" So there's a lot of things that we're just not sharing with families and families don't know about that this person would be a liaison to all of the options that are available to them.
And I think we often think about those going into home education, but when we look at students that are leaving Imagine after eighth grade, how, what is our engagement with those families? Students that are leaving Christ the King after eighth grade, what is our engagement with those families? I will tell you until last, this year, we just left out, those families, we hoped that they came to us. There was not a system of us communicating with those families directly. And especially those ones coming out of Imagine, making it very seamless for them to be able to be a part of Flagler Schools. But we cannot piecemeal it, is what I would say, is that we are beyond piecemealing it. It has to be in an area where this is a focus that someone is having to do this intentional work around attracting students and keeping students within our district.
I'll tell you, I've personally done this work in student services with families that have come in, and Ms. Susan, our department secretary, will get me and say, "Can you help this family? They don't know what to do." And then we talk about everything, credits and options and choice and schools and programs of study and...
If you want a diploma from us or if you're not, you don't want a diploma from us, like it all is very specific of what, around the process that you must take.
And 99% of the time, we have an option for them in district.
And in the shadow of a $2.5 million shortfall because of enrollment, I think this is a pretty safe number to invest, to try and recapture some of that number, you know?
Would this person be able to assist families with, and I won't go into a lot of detail, but when I was in all of my budget training, I mean, this was mind blowing, and I talked to Ms. Moore about this, there were over 22,000 students in Florida. Yeah, and there's probably more. So basically, think of that in the state, so here just in Flagler, thousands, where that one student, just, I'm going to say $11,000, was provided, should have been provided to Bel Air Elementary for that student because they were a student in Bel Air, but that $11,000 stayed in a bucket. And so now that teacher, those resources that student should have got, but it, there was just, you know, that's, it happened and it's continuing to happen. So would this individual, like I'm like really upset right now, would this individual be able to do that and assist these families so they're filling out the documentation correctly? Because that could be thousands and thousands of dollars that we should have received, and it can, it's going to continue to happen if we don't have someone like showing them the way. So that, I should have asked that last time, but if that, that right there is, I mean, that would pay...
What was the salary?
From my understanding is that it starts at $68,000, I believe.
Okay, so at $68,000, I mean, that's basically potentially seven or eight new enrollments, brings in the equivalent, not, you know, that money's spent. But I'm just saying, it doesn't take much to show the value, prove the value of this position if we see those enrollments come in.
But I do like the data collection and then just seeing, but, I mean, just right there, the numbers, the math doesn't lie, and the math, we didn't get so much money and it's still not coming to us ever, and it's just going to continue to happen. If parents aren't able to fill out the paperwork the right way, even it could help with, that's just one little piece.
What Ms. Ramirez is referring to though, isn't that a statewide accounting and tracking issue? Not necessarily something that we did not...
No, that is nothing, we did not do anything wrong.
Right, so how are we, how are we saying this person would solve that?
We get that list of those, we just had to break it up and call these families and because the state...
Yes, we divided it up amongst people across the district and started calling these families and saying, "Hey, but this was, I mean, this was late." That's why now for our annual, our annual documents, we're asking that question on the front end so that we can, we can say to the fam, because some of the families, you know, they thought we were committing fraud against them because we had reported them to the state as we provided the service to your child. And so we are, we're chasing 179 students.
This is how you fill out the form, click this button, not this one, because if you click this one, what will happen? Your school will not get that $12,000 even though your student is still there. So just, you know, little things like that, that was mind blowing.
Yes.
So that would be a really big request for me. I don't, I don't know if it's specifically in there, but being helpful, I think that falls under liaison of assistance.
Okay, so if we're done talking about that, we'll move on, all right?
Thank you.
So we've got 19.01.
That's just an FYI that at your July 22 meeting, you will need to identify an FSBA representative and an alternate.
Very good, thank you for that. And that leads us to public comment. Do we have anybody for public comment today? Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to board member requests. Are there any board member requests today?
Just tiny, I just don't want us to forget about the like health and wellness, like, you know, because when school starts in August, just to make sure faculty, staff, district, you know, just keeping up with the wellness. That was a request from before, but whatever budget we have.
Yes, and that team is working with the insurance team about the wellness initiatives and all of that. They are doing that, but we will bring them forward to give an update on where we are. We are also pulling the data for you so that you can see the breakdown of the selection of plans for the open enrollment season that we just came out of. So we will bring, be bringing that before you as well as bringing you an update on the Fleet Trust. We spoke with them today. They are still working to bring the data to us around what that benefit would be if we were to join the trust. They were not Fleet when they came before us. Remember, they were the ones that were going before FAS, they're now Fleet. And so we will be bringing that before you as well for that.
I believe that, I might have brought these up in previous items, just reiterating, having a set of protocols that are clear and across the district and are transparent to parents regarding what the process is if classrooms are not fully staffed. So for example, is it our process that, okay, if you do not have a certified teacher or a certified substitute, then the, we will put the student in an online program? Like what are those automatic decisions or placements that we can say are going to be something scalable and put this at parents' minds at ease come this fall if there are unfilled vacancies, especially in those critical shortage areas? The next item is, we are very involved and understand the five-year plan process as it rolls for improvements on different campuses. I would love to have a presentation where perhaps the last 10 years, there is data sharing around what improvements and what five-year plan commitments have been completed and that spend across the different campuses, as well as how items make it onto that five-year plan, right? What does that process look, I think, look like? I think that would be beneficial, especially for some community members who are looking at bottom line numbers and wondering why, why is this school have X amount of dollars versus this school X amount of dollars related to improvements? Thank you.
Five-year plan is on for the first meeting in August. The information, and we'll make sure that we can add the additional pieces.
Nothing further for me.
Okay, so we move on to closing comments.
Yeah, so the Wellness Center ribbon cutting today was amazing. So that's why I think just getting all the well, health and wellness for all faculty is great. Mrs. Anderson, Ms. Franny Anderson will be having, hopefully, we'll see if she's the big winner next week. So for everyone listening, cross your fingers, she worked really hard and we're so proud of her. And just something little, a parent gave permission. So we have a student in Matanzas that had a boating accident, like family trip in Mississippi, just, you know, sending prayers. So he's a football player, ace academic scholar, but pretty freak accident in Mississippi. They're still there, but just sending prayers to our Matanzas athlete, you know. So the parent gave permission and...
And if you'll get with Mr. Finelli afterward so we can get...
And it just happened, you know, and I know we see a lot of boating accidents, but you know, and it's our own and...
We'll reach out as to what we can do to support the family.
But we're thinking of you, and, but yeah, so thank you, everyone. Great, great job.
Yeah, just looking forward to the start of the new school year. I'm excited about a lot of the outside-the-box solutions and preparations that are happening for this school year. And I, I'm in heartened by the efforts and the strategy that's going around to keep our schools in tip-top shape, as well as, again, want to shout out everybody for their growth this past year on the state assessment scores. And I think that this is the start of an upward trajectory that is going to yield even higher results in the next few years. So I'm very excited to be a part of that, thank you.
I'll echo that, Ms. Ruddy, for sure, but I won't steal Mrs. Moore's thunder about talking about that. But I am, done such a great job, and I've been saying this, we all have, that we're heading in that direction of just being the premier learning institution, not only for this county, but I think in the state, we want to do as a nation. So I appreciate our leader that we have who is guiding this with the help that, with everyone in this room, it takes all of us, and we're going through some difficult times. But your resiliency that you're showing right now is so admirable, and I really appreciate it, it's seen in this community. And I just look forward to what the future looks like as we move into next year, as we look at grades and what that looks like. So anyways, I just really appreciate the work that we're doing. We have a lot of work to do, I mean, to continue to be better and better and better and better. It's just, it's, that's a never-ending, ending cycle. Again, just the Wellness Center today, I think Mr. Bob's already gone and his team, and just want to recognize Mr. Walker for his work. And people were talking to us as we were talking today about how attentive he is and said that they've worked with multiple school districts in the past, but this by far has been one of the best school districts that they've worked with in being able to put a project together. So that, it does not go unnoticed. I'll leave it at that and give my time back, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I am very proud of everybody and the hard work to increase, you know, the grades that we've been working so hard for. It hurts a little to be shy, too, especially being here three years now, but, but I know that, that our team works very hard and that you all leave with integrity. And yeah, we'll get there. And also just extend my thoughts and prayers to Texas. It's just been so heartbreaking to watch, so praying for them.
Yeah, that comes with many of the comments that you all made. And when it comes to our school grades, and we have clearly been moving it forward. And, you know, this is a, this is a big ship to turn around and, but it, we've got that bow just about there, right? And I agree with Mr. Barr that we have a great captain, and I know we're going to get there, and I'll yield the rest of my time.
I actually want to, I want to say kudos to our team on the parade. I think it was Ms. Ruddy who said, and Ms. Ruddy and Ms. Dr. Conklin was another, but we were walking in one of the parades and Ms. Ruddy said, "I think we could pull out a float." And we said, "We're going to do it, we're going to do the float." And so I just want to say kudos to the team. It was a great Fourth of July parade. Our team did a great job developing and building the float out, and that was a lot of fun. I want to talk a little bit about school grades. You know, I've had a lot of people asking me, like, "Lashaka, what are your thoughts about school grades?" And last night, I, I am hardest on myself. And so I want for our performance to be reflective of the hard work that I believe that our educators across this organization have put together. And so my reflection last night, my question was, can you make progress and the results still be the same, right? Because when we look at those two points, you know, Mr. Barr sent me a message, he's like, "So close, so close." And I had to dig in and say, "What does that look like?" You know, because what I don't want for us is to be the same, right? Because that is definitely not okay with me. And so I just want to highlight a little bit of the success and the things that were done this year, that though that end number is the same, though the work that was done and the differences that probably don't stand out to, to many people. And so I'm going to start with a high and then kind of go down, but I promise you, if you give me like one minute and 30 seconds, I'll, I'll get it all, I'll get it all in. And so we had three schools remain in A, five schools remain a B, and the district remained a B. I want to highlight Flagler Palm Coast High School because sometimes, you know, you see Matanzas as an A, and we are proud of that A. Flagler Palm Coast High School increased 30 points last year. It is not easy to do, and so I want to just highlight them and the work that they're doing. Remfire Elementary School went up 19 points. Bel Air Elementary School, 15 points. Matanzas High School, nine points. Indian Trails, nine points. Benel, three points. We saw growth in every single achievement component, every single one of them. ELLA, grade three, ELLA, math, science, social studies. We had overall increase in our points by five. But what I am most proud of that, that may not show initially, our, our guiding principles, our vision and mission talks about all of our students making progress and the growth, and it chokes me up really to, to think about it. But there have been times that we have been in A and we've had some poor, poor performance subgroups. And so I just want to give you a little bit of data to say, the end can be the same, but progress still made. When coming on, we had several of our schools where Black and African-American students were underperforming subgroup, we have zero as of today. The first time that I remember that that subgroup is not a subgroup that we have on our federal index. Our Hispanic subgroup, zero of those, that subgroup is at any of our schools that are on our federal index for an area that we have to look at. ELLA subgroup, we're at zero for that subgroup across our schools. We've gone from 10 schools that had students with disabilities that were an area for, for us to down to three schools that have an area for us, and we have significantly reduced our subgroup data. And so Ms. Chong, you used the term integrity, and that means a lot to me. And the team is like, probably like, "Here she goes again." with the word integrity. There are lots of things that we could do to get an A and get an A quickly. But what our focus is, is to ensure that when we get an A, we can celebrate with all of our schools. We don't want to have schools that are schools of excellence who are underperforming subgroups of students, right? We want to be able to say that every single group of our students are making progress academically and we can confidently say that. And so I'm telling you, I'm hard on myself and I'm like, looking, I'm like, okay, are there things we could have done differently? But when I look at what we're doing to truly live out what our mission and vision states about all of our students, the proof is in the pudding. The numbers do not lie. And though the state continues to edge it up to make it a little bit more difficult, I think next year you need 65% of the points. You know, we're going to get to a place that we don't care what the state does. We're going to be clearing that no problem. And that is done by ensuring every group of students, that each, each group that they are making progress, not just that one number. And so, so much to be proud of. So for the people who are asking, I am very, very proud of the work that we've done. I am not yet satisfied because for us to be satisfied is for us to say that 100% of our students are at the place that we need. And that will then say we've accomplished the vision, the mission that has been set forth and then we need to rewrite it. So I'm very proud of the hard work. Can't wait to see the great things that we will do going forward. And I took longer than a minute and 30 seconds, but it's important to know. So I say to you, yes, the end result can remain the same and you can still show that you're making progress. And so when we say Flagler Forward, we mean it in all areas, Flagler Forward. So have a good night.